That's the question that I want you all to discuss this evening. Because if you want single lots, I have to follow this one.
Okay, so we're waiting to pull up the rest of them. So while we have. Steve, are you and Jim back by chance? Okay, they're muted, but that's okay. So we're talking about minor subdivision, one or two lot deal. Do you want them to have to be within the confines of the three ordinance? Walt, your thoughts?
I do. I'm favorable, simply because it's very easy to go around the corner, around the lot and leave a couple of shrubs or something like that and haul out everything in the middle. And I think what we're trying to do is to preserve some of the vegetation now. If the piece of land happens to be in a field, that's kind of a different petal of fish than one that's already got existing. And I was thinking primarily when we were looking at the property that is at the corner of.
Field Church Road.
Field Church Road and.
Homestead.
Homestead.
Yep.
It's just right now, it's, I'm not sure what it's doing. It's doing nothing, but they went in and ripped everything out except just a little bit right around the corners. And it does not fit with any of the rest of the character all the way around. And I just think that if we're trying to have a rural feeling, then we ought to have some other trees. Now, I don't know if the contractor that's going to build there has been required within trees and all those kinds of things. But right now, it's just a great problem.
The concern I have when I'm looking at this is, one, I want to make sure I understand buildable area and the areas that are allowed to remove trees and not. Because I've just found the language to be a little confusing where tree removal is not permitted within areas that have naturally current trees located outside the buildable area. For the purpose of this, buildable area means areas that are not in setbacks.
So we have a 40-foot rear yard setback.
Right.
So they cannot disturb within that 40-foot rear yard setback.
Okay.
15 feet on the side of each lot, so that's 30 feet swath of trees between lots. Unless there's a drainage easement, sewer easement, any kind of easement where they have to grade it to get it down to the street. Anything that doesn't need grading will have.
So if you're in a five-acre lot and you want to develop it as a single land use property, you could clear 80% of that property and just leave the setbacks and right of ways, and street right of ways on the street.
Good point.
In that case, I don't think this is overly restrictive at all.
I'm trying to keep it simple. I don't want people doing tree surveys where I'm counting trees and I'm counting mitigation. They're going to clear where they need to anyways, and they're going to mitigate to make the development look good anyways, and trees replenish kind of throughout the year. So I'm trying to keep it simple.
I agree with this because I think it gives the individual property owner a tremendous amount of why to how to develop that property, how to use their land. And it does restrict major development to say you need to work within the existing contours of your property. You can't come in and masquerade this entire thing and level off hills and fill in valleys to create a different kind of look, and that's not the look we want in this town. So I think it works.
Yes, I agree that in terms of applying this also to individual lots, that it should be applied.
Jim, do you have an opinion on that?
Hang on, I agree, the way that it's written.
Okay, Steve? Steve?
Steve, you're muted.
All right, we basically have a consensus. So you made a vote on this particular piece of it. We'll have further discussion or kind of where do we stand as a.
So we'll put it in as part of the UDO, and then we'll do the public hearing and all that as part of the UDO.
Okay.
So the only issue would be typically for individual lots, like doing a zoning permit and making sure they have their tree protection. Fencing is a lot for staff to do. We'd get four or five new homes sometimes a week.
Yep.
But we are doing our own erosion control. We have to do erosion control, but there's still fencing in. So I think it's pretty easy for us to either use the salt fencing as boundary for the tree protection.
Sure.
So it kind of follows you. Otherwise, I'd be nervous over enforcement, staff's ability to regulate this. But I think we're in a good spot.
Okay, Jim, you need further action from us?
No.
Okay. All right, moving on to new business. Discussion and consideration, minor subdivision, 218 Reddington Road. Lisa?
Yeah, so the applicant, Mr. Flyler, who's seeking a minor subdivision. It's 218 Reddington Road, a total of seven acres, some RCD. I mean, he's all in lots. We have Track A, Track B. Track A is about five acres. Track B is 1.5. And then we have this small swath of land over here. They're calling open space or Track C. It's unbuildable, so it'll be kind of tax deductional. Recorded as that in the tax records. We do, it is a panhandle lot, so they have the required lot size for the panhandle lot. Setbacks, we have to answer the questions.
Let's kind of work our way back around the room. Walt, do you have any questions about this particular development?
Not at all. Feel sorry for him, but the road went through his property.
Ed?
Just on Track A, the handle part of the pan there, is that part of Track A?
It is. They were debating whether to do an easement lot. You need a minimum of five acres to do an easement lot. And he decided to go ahead and connect it, so that is a part of Track A.
So because the note I'm looking at, you know, it still says it's a joint access and utility easement area.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'll do it with that.
I'm fine with it.
Jim?
This mute thing is stupid. I'm fine with it, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Ed? No, not Ed, I'm sorry. Steve? Looks like Steve's maybe out of the mix here for a minute. All right, if everybody's good with it, I made a motion.
Remove.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the amendments. Thank you. Moving on to item D, review of UDO ordinance, section seven. And let the fun begin. Go green. Kevin, I think you're up.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Very good. See if I can get to the large size here on my own screen. Well, let me try that one more time, and then I'm going to go. Since I can't see the screen.
You have all this memorized, right?
I'm close. I'll just, very close, very close. We're going to go to the pop quiz here in a second.
Kevin, I'm sharing my screen. Do you want me to stop sharing, and you want to share yours?
My only problem is I just need to get it full-sized here on my side.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm just going to go. I think I can manage. I am close to having it memorized. I have it here, too. So, hey, good evening, everybody. Just reminders that on the big picture here, we've already looked through sections one through six. Tonight's topic is section seven of the UDO, which is the zoning section. I had very limited comments back from all of you, so I think that's good. I want to kind of take it from the top and share the comments that were provided. And I think we'll end up spending at least a few minutes talking through the conditional zoning process and just make sure we're all together on how the CZ process will work and how it fits in with the permitted use table that is also part of this section. I think the other thing I would like to share with you all, if you took a chance, if you took a few minutes to look at the draft long version where we started, we really cut back a lot of words out of the existing Weddington UDO or Weddington zoning ordinance and also a little bit out of the state statute. But by trying to organize this simply by district and then the charts that we're going to get to here with the permitted uses and the setbacks and the yard requirements. If you just organize them in this way, you really don't end up having to repeat things as often as is currently repeated in the UDO. So I was pleased to end up with less words rather than more. I think we will find it easier to follow. Again, at our next meeting, when you see Article nine, which is the use section, that's where you're going to see a lot of your particular use requirements come back in. That'll end up being the bulkiest of your sections. So for example, the one that I think you'll care the most about will be your conservation residential development. And that's where you'll see the various standards from your current zoning or subdivision show up as organized by the use, not necessarily repeated multiple times by district. So I just kind of share that big picture organizing principle here. I'm feeling good that we're on a track of, as much as us lawyers like to write things and have them, I guess, wordier rather than not. I'm trying to avoid that stereotype and figure that less is more on this. So I hope you all were following that we were trying to be concise there and where we're able to save a little bit of time and space. So with that as an introduction, let me take it quickly from the top. Section D 701, purposes. The first paragraph is right out of the state statute. The color coded is out of your ordinance. And one comment that we received was to consider deleting all of the language from our ordinance and just relying solely on the one paragraph from the state statute. And I'm inclined to think that's a good suggestion on the theory that the purpose section is really not all that useful anyway. It's just background information to some extent. And I think practically the language that's here is already going to be in your land use plan. So I'm inclined to think that's a good suggestion, and we just save a few words there and track the more general language of the state statute in D 701.
I've got a question.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, my experience in using purpose statements and contracts and where my experience lies in not ordinances is to set the general framework and intent. So if there is disagreement down the line in terms of what, how an ordinance is enforced or how a contract is enforced, you go back to the purpose statement to see, okay, what was the intent of this language and what we're trying to do, particularly if we're willing to get variance to ordinances. So I'm not, I like the detail that's in here. I read through some of that, and I can already see it being applied to a potential project that might be in front of us in the next year or so. So I wouldn't turn it too far.
Yeah, go ahead. What I would ask that is realistically, I don't know how many people actually read the land use plan, so they may never see the intent that the community has specific to how we want land developed. So I agree with that. I think it's actually important that it's in here because these are the documents that the community and developers are most likely to read in that land use plan, in my opinion.
So like every zoning, every rezoning that you guys have. With the land use plan. So like when I go to the zoning document, I'm looking through the table of use and I'm looking at the setbacks, and I'm looking at the development standards. I never go back to read these statements. But when I'm doing a rezoning, I go to the land use plan and we make sure, why we pick out the goals of the land use plan and make sure why it's reasonable. This is repetitive of our land use plan. So I was in agreement to take it out. But I. Not a big deal.
I was going to say, probably, I don't feel real strongly about it. I don't feel like it's a major point one way or the other. I guess I would, if you asked me to pick, I would probably fall back to just the state statute on, I guess I'm going to make the opposite point with the contracts because I do those, too, is I try to make my purpose statements very light and because they get twisted for other reasons, too. And so, you know, to me, it ends up sometimes just being something to argue about that in the end is not, and this is why I'm mostly neutral on it. I mean, legally, this section doesn't really matter at all, right? So I don't know that my opinion ultimately is going to matter on it. But, I mean, Lisa, how do we want to go? If we've kind of got split thoughts on that, I don't know that it's worth a lot of bandwidth one way or the other.
Jim, do you have any comments?
No.
My thought is to scratch it out because the verbiage in the land use plan should dictate whatever that is anyway. If we have a fight over somebody, we're not going to be in the purpose statement. This is what it is. But I don't care what went over there. But I think from my perspective, I read contracts on a daily basis, and it pains me to go back through and scratch out the same wording five different times in the same contract, which I do on a regular basis. So my thought process is less is more. When we go back to the RCD, we're going to be dictating what those things are anyway. And it's going to be the land use plan. But that's my thought process about it, so.
What I wanted to do with this one, reference the land use plan to direct folks who have been reading this, to direct them to the land use plan.
Well, the land use plan is what they're going to be based off their proposals and our proposals anyway. It has nothing to do with the purpose statement. So that was my whole point. It doesn't have anything to do with it anyway, it has to be done. Use the state statute to move on. But if it's a major upset over somebody else's.
If the language, if this language is already in the land use plan, and this is just repetitive to the land use plan, I don't have a problem with it. Hey, guys, I.
And that was my whole process about it. I just, it just drives me nuts to remember that.
Remember number four? You guys having a pretty long discussion whether to keep number four or not.
Yeah, because the fact is, we don't want agents coming for breakers.
Where do people want to do that land use plan?
Yeah, it is what it is. You want to build here, it is what it is. It's our process. We're not something this group or that group or any favoritism in any form or fashion. So, but anyway, do we need to make a motion on that? I mean, what do you think?
Consensus.
Do you have a consensus here?
If I was just going to add to your suggestion, can we just reference the land use plan here? You know, to send people back there?
I did hear that, and I like that. And in fact, it's also, the land use plan is referenced in the introductory section already. And so I like that note. And how about referencing the land use plan here as well? That might be a way to shortcut it.
That's a great point.
Do you have a consensus on that?
Well, this is actually Walt's great point, I just.
Walt doesn't have a microphone. We have a consensus on that. Let's do that and move to the next point of concern.
Sounds good. D 702, this is right out of the state statute. It just felt like it was worthwhile to note the limitation that the state legislature has put on us that I think everybody knows now about generally, you're not allowed to regulate the architectural standards of a residential house. I said that seemed like the sort of thing that ought to be handy and known to people in the ordinance, but there's kind of none of my own personal drafting in D 702. And I don't believe anybody had any comments to that section.
I had one good picky comment on that that they didn't send to you. Just the first sentence in the second paragraph. And I can see, you said it's right out of state statute. It's just a double negative. To me, as soon as I read it, it's like, well, what? You know, regulations prohibited, which is a negative, may, or this action may not be applied. So something that's prohibited may not be applied. Just because it's out of state statute. I'm not going to suggest we change it, but just.
Yeah, I should stay it.
Very good, thanks.
Okay, Kevin, go ahead. Keep rolling.
Okay. Lisa, you want to keep going down the screen? So D 703, the zoning districts. And this is really the nub of this whole section, right? We've listed, and again, we're tracking state statute terminology of conventional districts and conditional districts. So the conventional districts, we just have the list of your existing conventional zoning districts with no change. Okay, so that's just the laundry list of what you currently have. And then we know that you have, as of this time, two existing conditional zoning districts, B1 and B2 CZ. And then this next part of the section is what I'll draw your attention to. I won't read it word for word, but it's important, is additionally, this UDO is going to permit property owners to petition the town council to consider creating a conditional zoning district on a site-specific basis. Okay? So sometimes, just to back up again, the next paragraph is, the CZ districts are the site-specific zoning plans that come before you all. And then the rules are basically made per each piece of property. And that includes whatever written notes are agreed to and the drawings of the plans themselves. Okay? So these are the site-specific rules are made up on a case-by-case basis. And I say made up, they're not made up out of nothing, right? They're made up out of the ingredients that are already in your ordinance typically. But they can also be additional ingredients, or you can take away some of the things that are already in the ordinance. Okay? So the big paragraph here, and we're going to get to this table of permitted uses. But as provided in the table of permitted uses, some land uses are only allowed through the conditional zoning process. And again, that's going to mean the full-blown staff review, your review, public input, the entire process, and then ultimately a legislative decision by the town council. And we reviewed that process a bit the last time, okay? And that's the CZ zoning process that's initiated by a property owner. And then we end up with a set of zoning rules specific to that piece of property. And the very last paragraph here, again, when I say that we have some preset rules, we do in a lot of cases, okay? But all the rules, regulations, and conditions that are already in here may very well be incorporated and used in a conditional zoning. But since the conditional zoning is a legislative process, where you're really writing a set of zoning rules for a particular bit of property, the town council would have the authority to modify what's already in the UDO. They could make it more restrictive. They could make it less restrictive. There could be some trading in the negotiation with the developer. So we're trying to be clear here that this is a flexible process that really does involve setting the rules on a site-specific basis. Lisa, it may be, I'm sure folks will want to weigh in and make sure we're all on the same page on this, but let's just take a quick look at that permitted use table as well. So Lisa's done a really nice job of simplifying this, okay? But if you go across the top of the permitted use table, we have all of your existing zoning districts, okay? And then we go down the side, you have all the various uses. And she identifies whether if you have BR, it's by right. You have some existing rules in your ordinance now that would allow these uses to occur, okay? If it's CZ, they're kind of conditionally allowed, right? The idea would be, okay, they're probably going to be allowed in this zoning district, but we're not going to say 100% for sure ahead of time that it's allowed all the time. We're going to go through the conditional zoning process with all the staff review, your review, the public input, the legislative review by the town council before we authorize any of those uses. And then the blanks mean we are not permitting the uses, okay? We have not set aside ahead of time where we're going to allow one of these things to be used in these districts, okay? So to recap the whole thing, we're going to have a set of uses, some by right, many by CZ. Everybody's following? Does anybody have any questions?
So instead of, we have a lot of like one-off projects. Instead of writing a tips amendment for that specific project, we would, we would zone it, do the conditional zoning and write the development standards that will be attached to that site plan. So instead of like redoing our ordinances for a particular situation, we are writing our standards for that site. Our zoning map is going to end up looking like, maybe for our churches right now, they're all conditional zoning, but I have them all like kind of highlighted in just like purple. So if. In the next month or so, the property would be purple, it's like purple. So any conditional zoning project. I know to go to the map and someone says, what's the zoning? It's purple. I know it has.
It's going to be site. And it will run with the land. Whatever decisions we make on that land will be on that land in perpetuity.
And we're sort of saying our commercial zoning district here is kind of what it is. And then that's why if you go to our commercial and retail uses, anything, anybody that wants to do retail or office use, you've got to come to this budget.
Where are you showing these big green swatches with our residential city? On the new UDO, wouldn't they all be conditional zone?
No. They'll rezone to that type of specific plan, but they're going to stay as the current zone.
So they're stated, but the way I'm reading it, a developer, so you own a 50-acre tract, residential zone, R40. Right now, you can come in and put 40 units on there, 240 units on that property.
That was the same color.
Under the UDO, you could not. You would have to do additional zone, correct?
Yeah, you're right.
Everybody okay with that? Questions concerned?
Question I would ask is, once you're in conditional zone, then what are the limitations that, in terms of how, so what are limitations? I'm not following. So you're starting off with R40 or R80, and you know, let's talk about what they want to do, a mixed-use development, I want to do this, I want to do that. All that is potentially approvable.
That opens, it opens up. So the example is you have a office that wants to do a 20-foot setback instead of a 40-foot setback, but they're willing to put in 30 times the buffer from the negotiation. So you start with the standards of the underlying zoning district, and I'll have a list of what's required and then what's changing. You guys have to justify if those are permissible or not, and then make your vote on that.
This is where the purpose statement, to me, became so important. To me, that's the reference point is, okay, what are we trying to achieve by a land use plan and by these zoning regulations? And I'm very much in favor of the conditional zone concept. But I want to ensure there's a framework that is being measured against and it's just not, oh, who happened to be sitting in those five seats this year making an arbitrary decision. So there's a framework that those decisions need to go with.
So you're required for state statute to go compare it to the land use plan. Not only is the meat plan, is it reasonable? You've got to explain, you've got to use those, and what point is the meat plan? And explain why, justification. I would have a statement from that land use plan. And if you guys want to ask more. And if you guys want to ask more about the ordinance, but I'm looking at the ordinance as my development standards setbacks.
That's right.
And I'm looking at my land plan as reasonable to make this move from 50 to 10 acres open space if I want to make the lot smaller.
Can we tie back some of the verbiage from the from the town surveys? Where those that made their voices known about what and how they would like it to be done? Not redone, a continuation of what we're already doing. Which obviously was a result of what the land use plan, because that's what works so hard.
I was going to say that's what the land should reflect this certain.
And I guess, I missed last week. I'm waiting on this. It sounds like you're opening the door very wide here, and maybe I'm misinterpreting this. But I guess I'm questioning why that's being done? What's the value to the community in having that done? And it's basically like, where's that coming from?
Okay, yeah, so let me try to answer that. I would say we're not opening the door any wider on development. It is an accurate legal statement. It's always the case that the door is open for a text amendment to any ordinance of the town, okay? So, all that is being said is that for a legislative zoning process or a text amendment or any ordinance, it, we're being straightforward and accurate that anybody, anytime, can ask for a change, okay? So, that's all that says. And you can't bind a future town council's hand, I mean, I can't pass an ordinance that says the town of Weddington will never consider lots of excise, okay? They always, so the door is always open to consider just about anything, okay? But what the door is not open on is approving it, all right? So, how this how this ought to work, it ought to it ought to walk and talk a lot like the preliminary plat subdivision review that you all look at now, right? So, there's, the applicant is going to come in. And let me back up, I'm going to give you three quick examples, so you can kind of see how this could could vary for a little bit, okay? So, I think your your go-to example is going to be a conservation residential development where someone wants to follow your rules for conservation subdivision. And when we put CZ in the box for conservation residential development, what we're telling somebody is, is if you follow the preset rules, you are very likely to be approved, okay? So, to the extent somebody makes no changes to what's already in your ordinance, I think the expectation ought to be, because you all are comparing it to the ordinance and the land use, the expectation would be that you all would recommend approval, and the town council would ultimately approve it because there's no changes to the preset ingredients that you all have already put in the ordinance. What we're saying is, though, if somebody wanted to propose, let's say, a smaller front setback in exchange for more open space, that that could be considered, it would absolutely not, it would not have to be approved. It would not have to be approved, but it could be. And then you would have to evaluate that and compare it up against the you know, so I agree with like the purpose statement, right? You'll compare it up against the the land use plan and the purpose statement and say, hey, is this a particular piece of property where these modifications and the trade-offs make sense? And if they do, you all can recommend positively, and the council can approve. And if they don't, you all are welcome to say no. I think the easiest no example is if somebody came in and requested a use that is not in that chart right now. And you all would be allowed to consider it, and you're allowed to consider it now. I mean, that's, I mean, anytime anybody wanted to consider, I mean, somebody could come in today and propose an entirely new plan for the entire jurisdiction, they can ask. You all presumably would say no to that, right? Because it's not consistent with the plan. So, the, I'm going to say the skill in the negotiation process is say no early in the process if it's something that's that's not favorable and not aligned with the town. I think practically what would happen, and this is what does happen, is if somebody is proposing something that's not aligned with the land use plan and with the ordinance, the town planner says, you know, you're not likely to get that approved. It's not aligned with the plan. Or if it is something that's unique and special, that it seems like it may be approved, then we're going to go have to have a discussion about that. So, the idea is to have more control at the site-specific stage of the process. It's not to open the door to anything goes. I think you're frankly more likely to hear concerns about it being too much. It is going to require property owners to come through the CZ process with you, which is a legislative process and allowing the public in. I would, I would think you're more likely to hear, why are you letting the public comment on my development?
And that's kind of, I may, the comment I had when I looked at this is that working out, if I'm a property owner with my 40 acres, 40 acres, and I want to do a traditional subdivision following the existing rules, if I've got my terminology right, I could do that by right. And I would not have to, as long as I followed all the rules and set back the requirements, and I would not have to go to any other process. And now, I would, now I would have to go through the CZ process.
That's true. Now, remember, you, the way you all are set up right now, it still goes through a process. In fact, the steps are going to be exactly the same. What what I'm recommending to you is to be direct, that the process we want it to be is a legislative process that is discretionary to some extent at the town council level, does in fact allow the public input, and does in fact allow you all to make recommendations and ask, which which you all, I mean, you all tend to do this, right, is, can you make this improvement here, right? Right, if you see something on a particular site that makes sense, that may not have been thought of precisely in the in the zoning ordinance, this gives a very clear legal path to just have those discussions about what can I do to make this particular site better and more aligned with the purposes of the of the ordinance?
The example is turn lanes. You guys, a lot of times ask for turn lanes, and they're not required. And technically, if the developer says no, and the TIA says they don't need one, you're out of luck. So, now we have the ability to do those extra asks.
I think the other thing I like about that particular piece is it does get more people involved initially. So, let's say that somebody wanted to bring in a project that was not necessarily favorable. You'll see the light of day a lot quicker, because it has to go through that process. So, if the masses didn't particularly care for it, they could protest up front more so than they would on the back end, and say, well, I wish I would have known. So, from that standpoint, I'm agreeing with the way that's set up. The other piece of it is, you know, we have our long process to get something approved now. So, we come in, a developer has a concept. And he gets with Lisa, and then we do a charrette, and we go through, and we say, okay, not this part, but this, you can do this, but you can't do that. That's going to have a lot more impact on kind of doing what they're doing. It took me a while to kind of get into this, I'll be real honest. Because I don't like change, period. I know what I'm dealing with upfront, I don't like change. But I think this will have a little bit more flexibility, or Lisa, to kind of say what we do want, what we don't want, to kind of get an assumption put together from the developer, what may or may not clear the planning board. But even at the end of the day, if the planning board says no, if they've got three people in the town council that says yes, it doesn't matter what we do anyway. Town council don't have to pay attention to what we do. As a general rule, they consider that, and it's a pretty strong consideration. Have they gone over and disagreed with that and approved projects? Absolutely. As a general rule, that's not the case then. So, you know, a valid concern, and sort of appreciate you bringing it up. From my perspective, you know, I think we're probably on the right path. I think most have the most experience with it, of course, and you know, I think our environment, the way we tend to do things, is going to weed out a lot of indiscriminate projects as it is. First of all, they can't afford the land prices to make it do what they want to do. I think there's a whole lot of hoopla that happened, which I'm okay with. Hopefully, we get much better project than the hoopla.
What I, I didn't want to discuss this process. This is actually defined what what the process is. We go through the process, we do it one time, we don't have to come back. It's a huge step in the right direction. And the tackling with the wrong staff, this commitment will reduce the process. Once it's decided, then it's administrative issue, the town council, and they don't have to come back. With the planning board, so I'm liking it.
Steve is back.
Hey, welcome back. Steve, you have any concerns, questions about what we just discussed and thought?
And here's Jim, too.
Steve, you're still muted.
Hold the spacebar.
All right, Jim, do you have any questions concerning what Steve will mute?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Jim, welcome home, Jim. All right, so we're talking about the UDA. Did you hear the initial concepts, or are you just kind of pulling in? You're still on mute. And Steve's on mute.
Go ahead, keep going, don't bother with me.
Jim, did you have any concerns or questions about the concepts we're talking about, or are you just getting into?
No, just, I'll just, I'll catch up.
All right. Steve, you're still on mute. All right, Kevin, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
While they kind of catch up a little bit, let's roll into the next piece and keep rolling here.
Very good.
Are we all in agreement how this this thing is set up, or we have a consensus here?
I have one additional question on the Section 8 conditional zoning district. I hit the paragraph three. In a word, it says some uses, some land uses are of such a nature and scale that they have significant impact beyond both immediate and the surrounding areas. And you talked to me that it cannot be predetermined or controlled by general district standards, and thus are only permitted by conditional rezoning district approval. I was unclear, who makes that decision that that is all under conditional zoning?
So, that's the permitted use table. That's that's the sentence behind the CZ in the permitted use table.
Okay, I was reading.
Okay.
Okay, in addition to that table, we have other conditions or other potential projects that could be of such a scale and nature, and they would also have to be CZ. So, this is
Correct.
preamble for that table, not as an additional requirement beyond the table.
Correct.
Okay. Let's keep going, Kevin.
Very good. I don't think I'm going to have very much more to say about this. Please, Lisa, let's let's look just real quickly so they can see the second chart. Yep. So, we also consolidated, this was a lot of pages that of text. When you look at the preset standards for for your yard requirements, minimum lot size and the minimum lot widths, I thought this was fantastic for Lisa to be able to pull this together in just this half-a-page chart. So, again, what should be approved is somebody coming in with a conditional zoning plan for a conservation subdivision that is in compliance with the standard lot sizes and yards. And if they want something different, they can ask, and you all can say yes or no, if it makes sense, okay?
Correct.
No, no change to your current rules there, so. All right, D 704 is just a placeholder. You're right there, Lisa, I think this is where we were. So, and there are no further comments, we'll just run through this very quickly.
One question, Kevin.
Oh, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
On the table, I noticed the others, there's no minimum lot width on the CZ. There's no minimum lot size, but there's still a minimum front yard setback of 80 feet.
C is the minimum lot width.
I'm looking, minimum front yard setback residential uses 80 feet.
50 feet for front yard, 20 feet for conservation. That minimum front yard is 80 for conventional, 20 for conservation.
One and B2 CZ zoning.
There are none. They have, there's some landscape buffer requirements, but there's no setback requirements listed.
But there is for residential.
There's 80.
Okay, let me fix that.
Hold on.
Ed, you're on it.
I can read a table.
Lisa, do you have that? I wasn't tracking that very well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I would send the same, and we'd apply for a setback also.
Ed, you may want to make a note of that, so when we see that chart come back, I may forget that. Okay, Kevin?
All right, very good. 704 will be for another day, that's that's, we don't have a parallel provision in our ordinances now, so we'll just hold 704 for later. 705 is right out of the state statutes, quasi-judicial decisions for the Board of Adjustment, which will be two things, either an appeal from a staff review or a variance from the zoning ordinance, where we have the statutory kind of checklist of things that have to be satisfied for a variance to be granted. Again, nothing that that's state statute, and I'll say generally consistent with your current rules anyway. There's not really anything there of significance, in my opinion. And really, 706, I would say, is a not of any particular significance for our discussion here either, so nobody had any comments.
Okay, so we have the the table corrections that Ed brought up. And then we had the general consensus on the purpose statement dynamics. Any other changes or additions that we need to address? All right, listen, what do you need from us on that? We can make changes later on. Kevin, do we need you anymore?
You probably don't need me anymore, I appreciate it.
Another one, please, thank you for your help.
All right, hey, y'all have a nice evening, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item six, update from town planner report from our municipal town council meeting.
I do not have a report.
Board member comments? We'll start with Jim.
Good.
Jim, you have any board member comments?
No.
Outstanding. Jim?
No.
Steve? He's still here. And we're going to say no. Ed, any more human comments?
No additional comments.
Well?
Good job.
Sammy? Great. Board, thank you for a quick meeting. Listen, Karen. Thank you for a wonderful meeting. And now, Ed. And now Ed. Most are due adjourned.
Thank you.
All a favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry.